We do not have a quorum yet, do we?
No.
Oh, yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Oh, there we go. She's cleverly disguised as Malia.
That's my daughter. My name so that people know it's me.
All right, we'll just give a few more seconds before we get started. Looks like we have a fairly short agenda today. Hello, Matt. Hello, Karis.
Yeah, enjoy the short agenda because I'm sure they'll be longer in upcoming months.
Guaranteed. All right, Karis is connecting right now. When he gets on, we'll begin after I get a drink of water.
Do we know whether any of the other trustees are going to show up here?
I have not heard from Nathan or Casey.
That's okay. We know what to do. I think Kara says having a little trouble. So I think we'll go ahead and get started if everyone's ready. I'm going to call to order the Tuesday, March 16th, Board of Trustees of the Spokane Public Library meeting. Well, you have a short proposed agenda in front of you. Does anyone have any changes or additions? Hearing none, I would ask for the approval of the February 2021 board minutes.
So.
Second.
Very good. It's been moved and seconded to approve the February 2021 board minutes. All in favor? I.
I.
Bye.
All right. Next, we move on to the February 2021 bills and contributions.
Yeah, I'm at a little bit of a disadvantage. I do not have the minutes in front of or the packet in front of me because I can't get my new library email to work with a particular computer. I can make it work on my phone. Anyway, I don't know what the numbers are, so you'll have to tell me. Okay.
So I move that we approve the contributions for March, oh, I'm sorry, for February in the amount of $3,868,885.54.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Hi. Very good. And we will move on to the financial report. Nicole, are you taking care of us?
I am. Thank you, Mary. Appreciate it. Okay, so for library operations, our cash and investments trend, we closed out February with the ability to pay 113 days of operating costs. Our cash and investment balance net of incomparances is now at $3,884,901. Of that amount, $541,537 is reserved for capital. And for expenditure trend, our February operations expenditures were normal and routine in nature. The total came out to $679,111. And of that amount, 76% was for wages and benefit. And in business office news, we did reach our goal to have the year-end processing complete before March, so we got everything wrapped up.
How exciting.
Yes, it feels really great to have that done. So the city is continuing efforts and making progress on the new fixed asset system implementation within FMS. We now are seeing an influx of purchases that are related to the bond. So we've added an additional tracking mechanism using Excel to maintain those technology purchases that we're seeing come in. So essentially, this tool is going to help us frequently tie up to our financial management system and will help ensure the accuracy of the transition when it takes place to that new process once the city gets that done. And then the last piece of news I have is that now that our attention is beginning to focus on opening our new branches, we're preparing for some of the upcoming operation needs. So this month, we are beginning the process of putting together a request for proposals for security services, and there'll be much more to come after that as well. So now I would like to open it up for any questions, or I'll pass it over to Penny with the bond.
Any questions for Nicole?
None for me.
All right, Penny, you're up. Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you. New this month, I have now added site financials for all of the construction locations and renovation locations. So you'll see the regular combined statement of revenue and expenditures, but you'll have a complete financial set behind it. And if you want to find those today, they'd be starting on page 25. Let's see, since our meeting last month, we completed the bid evaluation process for the remote user access system. And Security Solutions Northwest was identified as the winner, and we already executed their contract in $115,000, and they've actually already been on site at all of our locations. We in February entered the fabrication phase for the children's areas, and we executed that contract in the amount of $1,000 or $1,48,000. And that's just for the children's area fabrication. We had one amendment come through under the special authority. It was $48,000, and that was for amendment number two for MK Solutions. That was materials handling equipment for South Hill. Okay, so I want to start showcasing elements of the bond. And this month, we're going to take a look at automated materials handling and technology. And I'm going to talk about the financial section, and then Tara is going to hop on, give us an update on those. So the automated material handling and kiosk had a budget of $1,840,000. And we awarded a contract in February to MK Solutions. It was February 2020 in the amount of 1.3 million. We've had amendment one for additional dispensers and self-checks. And then this most recent amendment this month for 48,000, bringing that contract to 1.6 million. So we've got a remaining budget of $226,000, and our full contingency is intact at 54,500. The technology budget was approved in December for procurement and execution, and we're buying all that equipment by way of co-ops and state contracts. And that budget is 1.2 million. We've already used 488,000, leaving 770,000. That contingency also is intact as well. So Tara's got a technical update for us on both those topics.
So it's exciting. We've got MK. All of their equipment is going to start rolling in in May. So we're working with all the contractors and with Hill right now to schedule when those are going in. But we're already working on the software and getting them configured and doing what we can without the actual equipment. Computers are rolling in. We're going to have great new low-profile public computers, and we're getting everything configured and ready to all talk to each other. So it's pretty exciting. The co-ops are great. They've been really thankful to have those budget-wise. So we're able to buy equipment that is going to last, but we're not spending top dollar for it. I've just been very impressed with the amount of money that we have been able to save by using those co-ops. It's been really nice. That's exciting.
Yeah, and it also prevents us from having to go out in the bid process because the bid process has been completed by the agencies that we're cooperative purchasing with. So it's a big time savings as well as we get the financial benefit.
That's terrific.
So any questions about our cool new technology?
Well, thank you very much, Tara. Thank you, Penny. That's just wonderful news. I love co-ops, so obviously.
Our hope is to, we're going to bring a new topic to you each month. And what I failed to mention is that all of our, the bond projects, many, many SPL staff are involved with our bond projects. And so even though it sometimes feels like you hear from just one or two of us, our SPL staff are members of committees. They have special assignments in addition to their daily duties. We hold regular meetings and gather input and feedback from affected departments, especially like facilities and technology. So our hope is to not just hear the financial piece, but to hear from Tara and our other SPL teammates that are heavily involved with these projects.
We look forward to hearing that. Thank you very much, Penny. Thank you, Tara. Excuse me. Next up, we have the bond construction project update. Matt, that's you. There you are.
Hi. So yeah, things are warming up outside. And so now they're starting to do some site work, pouring sidewalks, digging some more utilities in. So there's some site activity starting to happen now that winter is long gone and over. Colorado, they got hammered recently, but we're in good shape. And you'll notice the exterior skins, metal panels are going in place on most of the projects. Most of the glazing is in place. That's a good sign. I think, together, I'm kind of working my way in. Inside the building, there's a lot more sheet rock being hung. A lot of roughing has already occurred with the utilities, standing, taping, taping, sanding, sheet rock. In some instances, we're painting already, the shadle they're painting at Hilliard. And they're also doing finishes, restroom tile, floor tile, wall tile, and that kind of thing. So all the projects are moving forward, progressing quite well and seem to be on track. So it's an exciting time to be out on site, and I'm sure you've seen some pictures. So that's almost as good. So that's my report. Any questions for me?
I have a question. On the sheet that you gave us with our packet, it says subcomp 6321. For instance, what does subcomp mean?
That's an abbreviation for substantial completion.
Substantial completion.
Yeah, that's when the contractor is supposed to have the project completed enough that you can, an owner can actually move in.
Okay.
Contracting. It's also the date that warranty starts, one of your warrants period starts as well. So it's a substantial contract date, so to speak.
Now, I'm assuming Andrew is correct. Correct me if I'm wrong. That's not the, that's not our projected opening date.
No, not at all. There would still be testing and things that would need to be happening. Moving in is going to take some time. You know, the great thing about libraries is that we have a lot of things, and that takes some time to set up and get to the point where it's ready for the public. So, and I do have those dates as part of my report.
Okay.
Yep, we'll announce those in two minutes.
Okay.
Maybe sooner than that because there is no chairman's report. So that means that was only about 20 seconds. Go, Andrew. It's your turn.
All right, well, let's go ahead and start there then because it's a good transition. So the team put a lot of thought and coordination into choosing our dates for opening up to the public. What that looks like, we don't know. As far as how much capacity we could have inside the buildings, what activities would be allowed, we will be, just like everyone else, pivoting as new guidance and information comes out. But August is going to be a busy month. So Shadle Park will be, we have a tentative opening day of August 10th. The Hive of August 12th. Liberty Park, right at the end of August, for August 31st. And Hilliard Shaw would be September 2nd. So a lot of activity, a lot of excitement that I think will be happening around libraries and the services we're providing. I think that there's going to be a lot of eagerness for the public to utilize the services. But again, what that looks like, we don't know. The plans are, right now, to have a more muted opening day type celebration just because, I mean, we are still in the pandemic. But we will reserve the right to pivot just based on what that looks like for the public. But right now, it makes sense for us to keep it a little bit more muted and low-key and look more at 2022 as maybe a one-year celebration of those openings just because I think the community will be better prepared. And from an equity standpoint, it makes sense to have that approach. So we're really excited to be in this place. It's getting really real right now. As you can tell from those pictures and Matt's report, these are, these are actual buildings. They're tangible. I mean, you know, it's just a lot different seeing these, you know, in a 3D or even the 2D picture as opposed to the plans that we've been working around for the past couple of years. I took a drive by Shadle just last week, and holy, holy cow. That is just such a sight. I mean, it's just one of those examples of, yeah, you got this plan. You have this piece of paper, and then you see it in person, and it's just a different, a different experience. And I would say the same for Liberty Park, too. It just has a really big presence in that park. And just like Mark Daly was telling us as we were approving these plans, it has that big presence, but it also feels like it just belongs there. It's just, they've just done such a great job, and I think that we should all be proud with what we're looking at here. Any questions on opening dates? We'll have more details as it's getting closer as far as what that's going to look like, what sort of roles the trustees can play in that process.
Yeah, I have a question. So what are we looking at for closing South Hill and Indian Trail? Would those close right after these open, or how's that going to work?
Yeah, I don't think that we've necessarily finalized what the closing dates are for those. I think that we're still, you know, going to make sure that we're on schedule, you know, even through these last months before we would determine a closing date. But it would be closely on the heels of there. It's a, you know, we're pretty lean right now in our staffing. So we want to make sure that we're able to cover it operationally at this point. But once, once we get closer, we'll make that announcement.
So maybe fall for South Hill, for instance?
Um, I would say it'd be within a one or two-week range of closing those other, or opening the other facilities.
Okay.
We're, we're pretty thin. We have a little bit of flexibility just because we're not operating the full downtown library right now. But still, we want to be fair to, fair to staff.
And the other question is, what, do you have a tentative opening date for downtown?
Oh, that's like next year. I think the substantial completion for that is April of next year. So you're probably looking at, I don't know, Matt, would your best guess be like a June? July for opening?
I was just checking, March, March, I think it's March 1st is substantial completion. So we're typically opening about two months after that. So March, April, May, May, June, somewhere in there.
Right around Lilac Festival time.
Possibly, yeah.
So Andrew, I just had a, I just had a question about the opening date for the Hilliard on the Shaw campus. How does September 2nd align with school opening? Will school already be in session for a few days at that point, or are we opening on the day school starts?
We're opening the day school starts, I believe.
Okay, all right. I was curious as to the alignment there. All right, thanks.
And Andrew, I know we're trying to keep it low-key, but for the Shadle opening, I do believe we need bagpipes.
That's an idea. We will look into that. I don't know about the pandemic guidance for bagpipes these days, but.
It'll be outdoors. It'll be outdoors. Nobody wants those clothes to them anyway, but I think we need bagpipes and maybe Highland dancers. I'm just saying.
We have a connection through staff, so I think that's something we can, we can make happen.
Thank you.
Other than that, you know, we've been reopening our services, and that's, that's going really well. Our current status is that we're at 25% capacity with reservations through our Communico service. The ultimate goal is to get to that 25% capacity without reservations. If all goes well this week, you know, we should be seeing that getting pretty close. You know, and of course, just, it just seems to be how the timing of my director's report works. I think this is coordinated with the governor. But once I submit my report, announcements come out. And as you know, we're looking at a Phase 3 scenario now for, starting March 22nd. We don't know what that looks like for libraries at this point. Guidance has not been published, so we're anxiously checking that to become available. You know, in prior iterations of these roadmaps of what is and is not allowed, Phase 3 had a 50% capacity for services. So we'll be working our way possibly towards that in the next month or so. Again, depending on how our rollouts and layering on these different capacities and hours goes, you could be seeing that pretty soon. And I really just wanted to give a shout out to our staff because they have been phenomenal in getting back service to the public. They've been very eager. In fact, they accelerated our schedule by a week or so because they found, you know, what we were doing to be quite manageable. They felt safe, and they've just been such a great partner in getting this to where it needs to be for the public. So we've got, as you know, we've got a phenomenal staff, so thank you to them. In other staffing news, we have named Laura Rixson our star spotlight. She came out with this great tool to help track our organizational wig. We've extended our organization wig. You'll recall that back in December, we launched one around staff wellness. That went over really well with staff, as you might imagine. And we're extending it through May at this point. I'm a firm believer that, you know, we need to be a resilient organization in order for us to be successful. And, you know, this, this is something that we can do to aid in that resiliency. So right now, we're, we're asking staff to explore a new healthy habit every week to try out and possibly incorporate into their, their long-term habits. So we'll see how that goes at the end of this. And in some really exciting news, Mark Pond, as you know, our business librarian, was just named the 2021 Business Excellence in Librarianship winner. You know, Mark has been doing the job of the business librarian for quite a while now. And he's probably our most famous librarian in the community. He's always given presentations. He's always working with community organizations. Whenever I'm in a meeting, they'll say, "Do you know Mark Pond?" And I'll say, "Yes, I have heard of him." But we're just so excited for him to get this honor. It's a big deal. You don't see a whole lot of public libraries that get this award. In fact, if you look at past winners, there's places like, I don't know, Stanford University, the Wharton School of Business, University of Michigan. So we're in really unique and good company with this award, and, and, you know, it's well-deserved for Mark's efforts. Other than that, I guess I should say, you know, the other thing that, as far as the pandemic goes, the Public Library of Washington, Public Libraries of Washington, which is a group of all the public libraries in Washington, we have submitted a letter to Governor Inslee to prioritize library employees on the vaccine list. You know, especially if we're moving into a Phase 3 statewide. Those expectations from the public, I imagine, are going to be a little bit different as far as what's being available. And we really need our staff to be, to be safe and protected in that effort for being out there. So we haven't heard anything back yet, but we hope to in soon. I know that the office is busy right now in developing that guidance, so that's all I got for this month. Any questions for me?
I have a question. Oh, well, and then I'll also mention, I saw the write-up of Mark's award on LinkedIn, and it was very impressive. It made, it made the library sound very impressive based on all the wonderful things that he's done. So anyhow, if people haven't seen that, I encourage you to take a look at it. And then I wanted to ask, can you just describe the, kind of the current status of how the grab-and-go works? Like, and how, how we're monitoring the capacity of people in the library? Is somebody standing at the door, making sure their appointments? Or I just felt like I wanted a little bit more information about what it looks like for our customer right now.
Sure, and I'm looking at Amanda right now. Hopefully, she can give a little bit more of the details.
So it's by appointment. So when you receive your hold pickup email, you'll have the option to either book a curbside appointment or a grab-and-go appointment. And starting tomorrow, depending on what library you go to, there'll be an increase in the number. You'll be up to 25 spots, 25% capacity spots for every 30 minutes. And then people can also just go and book access as well. You don't have to have books on hold. You can also reserve time to just go into the library, browse. You can do that also.
Thank you.
Um, this is a question, but an observation. I did the grab-and-go at South Hill last week, the first, actually, the first day. And it went really smoothly, and it was just wonderful to be in there browsing the stacks again. And it felt very safe in there. There was, you know, it wasn't, there was, there were not very many people in there. And the staff was wonderful and very helpful.
That's great. It's good to hear.
Andrew, I, will staff vaccinations be voluntary?
Yes.
Okay, and what is your healthy habit for this week?
I, yeah, that's a great question. So I have been trying out different breathing exercises. I read the book Breath by James Nestor. So I am trying to do eight seconds in for an inhale, eight-second hold, and then an eight-second exhale. It's supposed to be good for clarity and deep thinking, so watch out.
Great. Well, thank you.
Mary, what's your healthy habit?
Well, I didn't know that it was part of this, but that I was going to have to come up with a healthy habit this week. But I really have. I joined the group called Noom, the online health. The online healthier eating and I have had 100% compliance with the Noom platform this week. So
That's great.
I'm feeling pretty good about that. Jim, what's your healthy habit this week?
Um. Going for a walk.
There you go.
The usual, yeah.
Well, that's good. That's good. Um. We do not have a council lia, but thank you, Andrew, by the way. Thank you very much. I, you spoke with much clarity. And you seem to put a lot of deep thought into it. So it's obviously working. No council person is joining us today, so we have no council liaison report. Amanda, what's your healthy habit this week?
Oh, I'm glad you asked and I'm glad you didn't ask about last week's healthy habit. This week I am I'm trying to find it. It's on the floor. I'm massaging my feet with a small ball. Because it's good for your feet if you have any sort of foot things and I'm training for a half marathon. So I'm adding that to my training in order to massage my feet daily.
Well, those are good healthy habits. And last week, we want to forget about that. We just, I want to forget about last week, too.
Tell you about that, not live streaming on YouTube.
Very good. So you have a communications report for us?
I do. It's a brief one. The majority of our focus for the last month has been on, you know, increasing our communication about construction. That includes more social media posts about our construction progress, more newsletter posts or content about our social or about our construction progress. And also we're filming virtual tours of our construction right now. We're almost done with those and those will be ready and released in late March, early April. And so that everyone citywide, worldwide can get a glimpse of our construction progress. And the goal there is just to start getting people excited about what's happening, what's coming soon. Get an idea of where we are in the progress and and look forward to those buildings being completed. And then the other thing we're focusing on is our reopening communication and that's reopening due to COVID, not reopening due to construction. So reopening building our Communico platform for the reservation booking like we had talked about for limited computer access and grab and go access and just getting the word out to customers and the public that that is available again. So we, and you can see that effort reflected in all of our top posts on all of our social media channels have all been about those two topics. And likewise with our newsletter marketing as well, those topics have been the top pieces. And then as far as earned media, again, talking about reopening the doors. Spokane Public Radio and Spokesman Review both covered our, our plans and the county's plans for reopening after COVID. In the current phase from COVID. But like Andrew said, a lot of that has already changed as we're moving into phase three next week. So we'll just be continuing to keep that communication going internally, externally, and with the media so that everyone can keep informed.
Very good. Any questions for Amanda?
Amanda, wasn't there also a piece about the Hive?
Yes. So this report was prepared before that article came out. But there was an excellent piece in the spokesman review. If you haven't seen it yet, it was about the Hive, had some beautiful photos of the construction progress there that you can see as well as a great overview of the importance of that building for both the library and the school and as the community as a whole. So do check that out. I'll make sure to include that in next month's report as well.
That's a great article. Yeah. All right. Anything else for Amanda? Amanda, thank you very much. We have no new business this month. Last chance for some additional agenda items or changes. Going, going, gone. So our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, April 20. And there is no executive session tonight. So if there is nothing else for the good of the order.
I will say there might be chatter just in the city or state of what different boards and commissions, what platform will they be meeting on? It will be in person, virtual. It's my intention to keep the virtual meetings going for the foreseeable future. And I think that our other boards and commissions in the city are going to be following that guidance as well. So just wanted to clarify that if there was any questions about location, we'll plan on virtually for a while. We personally, we, we just do not have the space at this point to really offer up an effective in-person meeting that's going to be safe. Possibly when Shadle reopens, we would be in a different situation. We could safely hold a meeting there with the the room size, but for the foreseeable future, it's going to be online still.
Well, we've become really good at this, I think. So most important thing is keeping everybody safe. So with that, I will adjourn this meeting. Everyone stay safe, stay healthy. And enjoy the sunshine. Happy springtime, y'all. See ya.
Bye.
Bye.